Soon, I know we do have eighteen months and we only have three required meetings. So I was thinking maybe as far as maybe the next meeting taking place possibly in December, perhaps our first council meeting in December. I think sometimes we suspend that second meeting in December, but if it took place the right before the council meeting in December, I think that would give us still enough time to absorb what we heard tonight and then move on with the business of the the next meeting. Anybody, any thoughts there? Anyone? Any objections to December? Seeing no objections, that does that sound okay to the committee, the rest of the committee?
Um, that's definitely doable. Uh, the foreseeable date that we have to have this report done, I believe is in November of 2024, so we do have time.
Okay, okay. And then we can just follow up with the- So are there any other questions? Anyone? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the committee. We have not received any cards.
Okay, let's move on. As required by section twenty of the Decennial Committees on Local Government Efficiency Act, any member of the public has an opportunity to address the committee. For these meetings, we will follow the standing procedures in place for public comment at town and city council meetings. So are, well, we just, uh, we would still have cards, right? We would still ask people to fill out a card?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
We are at adjournment.
I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Trustee Allen, seconded by Trustee Euler. And, uh, I think we can say all in favor. All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yes, your problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I, can you keep your notes as well?
Thank you.
Your spreadsheet, whatever, if you're free day.
Yeah, yep.
Oh, yeah, I, it'll be, yeah, it's fine, thank you. Oh, yep, all right, thank you. Oh, you can, if you see the cup up there, can we pull you the back up there for me? Okay, oh, okay, definitely. All right, thank you. This is all mine, you can move to your stuff. Back, all right, okay. All right, guys, have a good day.
Madam Clerk, just let me know when you're ready.
Okay. Madam, Madam Mayor, whenever you're ready.
You're ready, okay. Everyone, please have a seat. We're going to start our city council meeting. Good evening, everyone. It is about six oh five P. M. On Tuesday, June the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in our council chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd like to welcome the audience that's watching on cable channel twenty-two. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Gordon Young, Councilmember Grab, Councilmember Jackson,
Here.
Councilmember Kelly,
Here.
Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Regenbach, Councilmember Velpula,
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
We have one proclamation.
Okay. We have a proclamation today that is honoring the George J. ROTHAN Company Architectural Millworks one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Wow. We have Mr. George J. ROTHAN, former president, and is your wife Iris with you? Iris, uh, Miss Iris is here. And then we have George J. ROTHAN, Jr., the current president, and his wife Marie. Is Marie? There you are. Okay. Our proclamation reads, whereas George J. ROTHAN Company Architectural Millwork, originally known as ROTHAN Planning Mill, was established in eighteen seventy-three by George J. ROTHAN and has remained in the ROTHAN family since its inception. Whereas George J. ROTHAN Company Architectural Millwork is celebrating its one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, and whereas they have produced ice boxes and bar fixtures for breweries, restaurants, restaurant fixtures, and architectural millwork for residential and commercial buildings in Peoria and throughout the country. Whereas George J. ROTHAN Company has contributed to the fine craftsmanship of many buildings in Peoria, including Peoria City Hall, Bradley University's library, Job's Hall, and Saint Philomeno Church and School. Whereas George J. ROTHAN Company supplied fixtures to the city of Peoria, which were installed in Peoria City Hall when it was built one hundred and twenty-five years ago in eighteen ninety-eight, and returned ten years ago to provide restoration work in the council chambers. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby celebrate the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of George J. ROTHAN Company Architectural Millwork in Peoria, Illinois. You look awful good for a hundred and fifty.
Stole my line.
Sorry about that.
Madam Mayor, Mayor, members of the city council, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize some of our employees that have come tonight. If you guys could please stand, I would appreciate it. Our company was founded in eighteen seventy-three and, and we still are in the same building that, that it started in. I won't tell you the address because, uh, I, no, it's twelve-hundred West Johnson. We're on the corner of Johnson and Webster. And, uh, and it's awesome. It's, it's great to be here. We thank you very much. Um, we've done a lot of work in Peoria. We've done a lot of work in the Midwest, and we've done work on the East Coast and the West Coast. We currently employ fourteen, um, people, men and women, and, uh, union carpenters as well. So we, uh, we, we keep working, keep plugging along, and, um, and it's a great foundation really for the Peoria area. And really, this, this, uh, this city council chambers was one of our cornerstones that we did ten years ago. And oddly enough, or not oddly enough, but interestingly enough, back in the left corner, when one of our guys was doing the work, he unveiled a letter that was, um, from one of the employees or whatever, the people that built the, originally built the building, and we found that letter behind one of our wall panels. And we actually did the wall panels and did the whole, um, council chambers and the whole building at its inception. So for a tune of eighteen thousand dollars way back when. So anyway, we appreciate, uh, the recognition. We don't really, uh, we kind of fly under the radar. Uh, George ROTHAN Company does. Um, we're still an architectural millwork firm, and we still pump out about two and a half million in sales a year, and we are very grateful to, uh, to the city of Peoria, Bloomington, and all the other cities in between. So thank you very much.
Mr. ROTHAN, I, I grew up at twelve oh eight West Johnson Street,
Did you really?
Which was one house away.
Yep.
Yes, and you know, I have fond memories of playing games in the lumberyard. You actually donated a lot of wood for our dog houses, community projects, and, uh, yes, uh, thank you for your wonderful service to Peoria.
Go stop down and pick up, uh, steaks for their tomatoes and things like that and walk by. So we're still, we still consider us part of the neighborhood. So that's, that's great. I'm glad you said that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. I'd also like to acknowledge something that happened last Thursday. It was actually going on at the same time as the State of the City address, which is why, uh, one of our council persons was not able to be there. The West Bluff Council bestowed their prestigious Pillar of the West Bluff Award upon Councilman Chuck Grab at their June twenty-second meeting. A graduate of Bradley University, Councilman Grab has lived most of his life on Peoria's West Bluff and has served with distinction as both an educational leader through his work at Peoria Public Schools and as a community leader through his longtime service on the Peoria City Council. The pillar, uh, is a recognition of the, uh, Chuck Grab's longtime service and his continued advocacy of Peoria's West, West Bluff. Congratulations, Councilman.
Madam Clerk? We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the joint town board and city council meeting held on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have two public hearings. The first one is twenty-three dash two fifteen as a public hearing regarding the annexation of sixteen oh two East Boy Scout Road, Chillicothe, Illinois.
May I have a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Uh, please cast your ballots. Motion passes. Uh, do we have anyone present that wants to speak at the public hearing regarding the annexation of sixteen oh two East Boy Scout Road, Chillicothe, Illinois? Second call, is there anyone present that wants to speak to this, uh, annexation of sixteen oh two East Boy Scout Road in Chillicothe? And third and final call, is there anyone present that wants to speak to the annexation of sixteen oh two East Boy Scout Road in Chillicothe? Then I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
The next public hearing is twenty-three dash two sixteen, a public hearing regarding the amendment to the annexation of twenty-seven hundred West Altorfer Drive, Peoria, Illinois.
May I have a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by Councilmember Velpula, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the public hearing regarding the amendment to the annexation of twenty-seven hundred West Altorfer Drive in Peoria, Illinois? Is there anyone present that wants to speak to the public hearing regarding the amendment to the annexation of twenty-seven hundred West Altorfer Drive in Peoria? And finally, is there anyone present that wants to speak regarding the amendment to the annexation of twenty-seven hundred West Altorfer Drive in Peoria? I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, I hope you had plenty of water and a cough drop. I'm ready to go.
Okay. We are at the consent agenda. Twenty-three dash two seventeen is a communication from the city manager and director of human resources with a request to authorize the payment of a workers' compensation award in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and four cents to a firefighter injured on April ninth, twenty nineteen. Twenty-three dash two eighteen is a communication with a request to concur with the recommendation from, from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance to amend the existing special exception ordinance number eight thousand nine hundred and one as amended for a special use for church facilities in a class R-two single-family residential district to allow three freestanding signs and wall ones, and one wall sign for the property located at fifty-five oh four North University Street, Peoria, Illinois. Twenty-three dash two nineteen is a communication with a request to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant fifty percent food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Safran Social, Inc., doing business as Safran Social at one twenty-four Southwest Adams, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. Twenty-three dash two twenty is a communication with a request to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant fifty percent food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Central Illinois Baking, Baking Company, Inc., doing business as La Bakery Cafe at forty-seven hundred North University, Suite fourteen A and B, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. Twenty-three dash two twenty-one is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Solid Waste Disposal Landfill Committee with a request to concur of Stephen Van Winkle. Twenty-three dash two 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 is our reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a request to concur of Michael Weisenhahn and Edward Berry. Twenty-three dash two twenty-three are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Housing Commission with a request to concur of Bree Mule Baller, Michelle Sanders, Debbie Leroux, Becky Peterson, Regina Morgan, Sean Hayes, and Brian Ullenhaupt. Twenty-three dash two twenty-four are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Liquor Commission with a request to concur of Timothy Spears and Camille Coats. Twenty-three dash two twenty-five are, is a reap, is an appointment and reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Mayor's Advisory Committee for the Disabled with a request to concur of Jessica Shoup and Doris Hayes. Twenty-three dash two twenty-six are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Sister City Commission with a request to concur of Rex Linder, Kevin Sullivan, and Melanie Culture. Twenty-three dash two twenty-seven are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Fire and Police Commission with a request to concur of William Spears. Twenty-three dash two twenty-eight is an appointment and reappointments by Mayor Ali to the CDBG Public Service Advisory Commission with a request to concur of Brenda Grove, Pamela Schubach, Al Qazan, Brett Colditz, and Quentin Campbell. Twenty-three dash two twenty-nine are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Advisory Committee on Police and Community Relations with a request to concur of Lorene King, Donald Jackson, DiMario Boone, Terry Burnside, Karen Wilson, Shalandra Birch, Andre Allen, and Kelly Peterson. And on your desk, there is a revised communication amending the appointments. Twenty-three dash two thirty is an appointment and reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Downtown Advisory Commission with a request to concur of Lenora Fisher, Raymond Lees, Jonathan Jenkins. Twenty-three dash two thirty-one are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Construction Commission with a request to concur of Jason Snyder, Bill Goed, and Todd Clay, Claire Hout. Twenty-three dash two thirty-two is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Civic Center Authority with a request to concur of Richard Rick Simonas. Twenty-three dash two thirty-three are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Municipal Band Commission with a request to concur of Denise Cooksey and David Little. Twenty-three dash two thirty-four is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Housing Authority with a request to concur of Helen King. Twenty-three dash two thirty-five is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Transportation Commission with a request to concur of Jada Herr. Twenty-three dash two thirty-six is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a request to concur of Colton Thomas. Twenty-three dash two thirty-seven is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors with a request to concur of Robert Johnson. Twenty-three dash two thirty-eight is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Public Library Board of Trustees with a request to concur of Lucy Gully. Twenty-three dash two thirty-nine are reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Public Arts Advisory Commission with a request to concur of May Gililand Wright, Richard Zuckerman, and Carrie Braggs. Twenty-three dash two forty is an appointment and reappointments by Mayor Ali to the Tourism Reserve Fund with a request to concur of Gregory Wilson, Bernice Gordon Young, and Kiran Velpula. Twenty-three dash two forty-one is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Historic Preservation Commission with a request to concur of Jeffrey Smith. Almost there. Twenty-three dash two forty-two is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Fire and Police Commission with a request to concur of Alexandria Lynn Pearson. Twenty-three dash two forty-three is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Springdale Cemetery Management Authority with a request to concur of Pamela Johnson. And finally, twenty-three dash two forty-four is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, unaudited financial report, and that concludes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? May I get a motion to approve the consent? Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any questions? Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just for clarification, Corporation Council Hayes, uh, is it okay that we vote on an item that we are being appointed to, uh, for this particular matter, sir?
Yes, uh, because you're appointed by this board as its emissary to a not-for-profit entity or board, you can actively vote in both, um, venues without restriction. But it's because you're the city's appointee to that, to that board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the regular agenda. Twenty-three dash two forty-five is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request for the following: A, to approve a contract with Color Add, Inc. for the downtown wave-finding signs project in the amount of six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and three dollars, with an additional authorization of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars for contingencies, for a total amount of six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three biannual budget to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from capital funds for the downtown wave-finding signs project, and this item requires a two-thirds vote of the council members voting, no less than six, and we need two separate votes, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to Public Works Director Powers to walk through the rationale for the recommendation, as well as the reason for the, uh, budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mr. Manager, I appreciate it. Uh, so I know there was a question in regard to this particular communication that came from a council member, and I did my best yesterday to try to elaborate why we went about what we did, um, in an email. Then I got another call today saying, oh, yeah, but it's not the complete contract amount. It's just the construction amount. Well, in my attempt to eliminate confusion and stay on point of this being a construction issue, which is where we're seeing most of our inflationary issues being the impact, we addressed the RFP amounts that came in specific to what was budgeted in the CIP for construction, hence increasing that amount when that, when that response came back. We did not culminate that into the overall project because our engineering is staying within budget. We're not struggling there. So what we didn't want to do was spend all of the CIP allocated dollars, come back to you as if we had overspent the CIP in total, when in fact, we were on track in spending our engineer dollars. Hence the wording that you see in this council communication. Overall, though, obviously, the council communication, now that if, if, well, I guess I should stand by and see if there are any questions about the wording for the funding first, before I explain wayfinding overall, because this is really kind of exciting. Um, unless you want me to just continue, Mayor, and do it all. All right. So obviously, wayfinding has been being discussed since I've been here. I'm going on four years in September, believe it or not, I can't believe it.
It's a long time.
But, and this is going to put us on the map in the wayfinding area and actually start it. We had the pilot. It was very successful. The RFP went out. I believe there were six bidders. We did select the bidder that was brought forward based on the criteria, again, established in the RFP that you have as an attachment in your council communication. In the email that you received last night, again, if you approve of this bidder, we will release that information to any of those contractors who may want to know what they could do to improve next time that weren't awarded. If you do not approve, then again, we would ask that this be held confidential because we will have to rebid and, or, excuse me, we'll have to release another RFP. We won't bid, which would compromise that process if anyone were to get their hands on this information. So that was the cause of my email yesterday and why I was so sensitive about do not release this information, because it is crucial what happens here tonight with this. The wayfinding process, I had another question. And, Councilor, I hope I was able to explain the, the tactile piece of that for you.
Thank you.
Um, this is going to provide for wayfinding throughout downtown. There will be several pedestrian kiosks. There is a map, a location map within your booklet or your council communication, as well as your attachments. Um, there were several samples. This was a very exhaustive process within the RFP, whereas we had a consultant helping us. We were actually measuring the thickness of the signage, the samples that they brought forward. The signed faces were analyzed, and then those findings were provided to our staff by the consultant as well. So I think we've done due diligence plus in this, and we're ready to execute and bring this to Peoria. Um, if you have specific questions, I'll stand by either on the funding wording or the overall project.
Any questions for Director Powers? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Move to approve twenty-three dash two forty-five, item A.
Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. And discussion, uh, Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Director Powers, I'm looking in our attachments and I'm counting, C, two, four, six, eight, ten, like eleven signs that are, uh, attached here. Is that what you- Is that what you plan on ordering with these funds, sir?
They should all be identified. The attachment, of course, you got ahead of me.
So, yeah, so there's eleven signs featured here. So for the person listening right now, why is it so expensive to make a sign? $600,000 for eleven signs? I mean...
So it's the signage, the content, the technology behind it. Keep in mind, there's going to be QR codes and technology. Gosh, there's a lot of this. Where they're located, meaning we're going to have to do borings underground, within sidewalks where there's utilities, so it's not just the sign.
Okay, so it's not just a sandwich board that's going up?
This is a project, and these are kiosks. And there's going to be a QR code, frankly, where you can scan this code, and this database will be updated regularly. We've just got to figure out by whom. We're thinking, I don't want to say so because they may not. I just, there will be an entity that will keep that database current on what businesses are in the area and how they're located. And actually, as I mentioned to Councilor Gordon Young today, we could actually create something along the line of, we can't go tactile because there's really no common standard for braille or so on on these signs, but you can actually incorporate sound and do like audio tour and direction and so on. So it could be a little interactive, and we are, I guess, in the infancy enough in the design phase of this enough that we can still incorporate those things, which isn't cheap. And then, of course, there's inflation. The initial bid amount, meaning that's why we're doing this budget amendment, we are at five hundred some thousand, and just in that time, the short two years, materials have just skyrocketed. The majority of this is going to be the contractor cost to have them installed.
Now, I appreciate that additional context, and to hear that they will be interactive and possibly being able to, you know, give sound and things of that nature. So that's, that's good to know for, again, just seeing the amount, you just think of maybe just a regular sign going up, and say, "Why is it so expensive?", but it's a little bit more in-depth than just...
And, and again, location. We, well, some of these signs will actually take a vector truck to use like a hydro load to, to get the foundations put into the sidewalk, because we have so many utilities buried downtown. You figure, you walk sidewalks, you have everything from vaults to electric to water to sewer to, and it's, again, you just got to be careful as you're digging, and that's very costly.
And I know we did receive a, a point of concern regarding the visibility of the signs for those who may be visually impaired. Was that factored into the decision of, you know, design or when you're working with the consultant on this?
The visibility of the sign for anyone, I would say, that's not visibly impaired. That's sort of to the question I, and if you don't mind, Councilor Gordon, I'm sorry, I do this, I don't know why, just names and me, but that speaks to her question earlier today, was there any tactile consideration or braille? And the response we got from the art consultant was, they did consider it. It's just unlike ADA for interior, in other words, where you find restrooms, elevators, there's a common placement for that type of thing for visually impaired people. On an exterior sign, there are no standards. So you can kind of place in your head, if you walk up to a kiosk, and if there isn't a sound, it's an obstacle. It's just something else someone visually impaired is encountering, and unless it's making a noise, like a crosswalk, or unless it's dimpled and something's leading you to it, and there's a common position established through some standard, you wouldn't know where to find the tactile markings, the braille. So all of that is in their consideration, which is why I brought up, we could possibly go into a sound tour, if you will, where you could activate a button, and it would activate or it would play on a schedule. We're all, we're in discussion and open to all of those things from you or the public for that matter, because we have not finalized yet.
Councilman, if I could just, there's eleven different types of signs. There's seventy-two locations. If you look at the map and you look at, there's, there's significantly more signs than just eleven that are coming into downtown. So I just want to make that clear, that there's, we have, the, the, the handout shows you the different types of signs, but the map shows you all the locations where those signs will be going throughout downtown.
No, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Good clarity there, and thank you, Director Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mayor?
You're welcome. Thank you. I call it smart wayfinding. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Powers, for your information in such a short amount of time. But I do have an additional question regarding the opportunity or possibility for some auditory connections to it. And I didn't ask you to, to check into this, so I get it if you don't know the answer, but did they talk about what that cost would be for that?
They did not, but they did say that it would be a change in scope, which is what I closed the email with. It wasn't contemplated, but it is available, is what we got, because the question was specific to tactile and braille. And the consultant said they had considered it and had gone to the point of that, but it would take a scope change, which means it would, the cost would increase from where we are now. I don't know what that is, but we can get an estimate. And then what locations would be best suited for the kiosk to where they would be placed?
Right. I've worked very closely with the Center for the Visually Impaired and Blind Center here, and certainly understand where there's this, you know, this wealth of, of knowledge, but often not people at the table that will be impacted, and, and things like smart systems like WeWalk, like that could connect to perhaps, you know, some system within these signs, just something to think about.
I couldn't agree more, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I mean, it was, it was just occurring to me, I'm not sure that a QR code is the best use of space, because, you know, if they have a cell phone that can read a QR code, then, and that cell phone can probably pull up Google Maps or Apple Maps, and they see where they are anyway, and they can go wherever they're trying to, trying to go. But, yeah, I mean, I, so, I like the idea of wayfinding in general, and I like the idea of these signs, but maybe, maybe I'd be more inclined to support some sound aspect of it, or maybe, maybe braille, but I, I see your point about it, you know, being outdoors and not...
And again, and I think the QR code is more to specific business information that would say be centered around our downtown business association, where there are specific businesses that want to advertise via that QR code. So that might not appear, say, specifically in a map search. It would be more of a, you would hear, if you scan the QR code, it would bring up the specific businesses in that area and a short snippet about that, that may or may not come up on a smartphone. That's, again, this is what we're getting is people are rolling out to us that they'd like to see.
When you say advertise, you mean we're going to generate revenue from this, or?
It could.
Okay.
It could.
All right.
We have a motion and a second on item A. There's no more discussion. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler? Oh, sorry about that. There you go.
Move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. For Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to reiterate, if, if we're not sure about this, something that Director Powers said. The, first of all, the total budget for this, we approved, was $696,000. Okay? That included what we're talking about tonight, but it also included the engineering, et cetera, that the Public Works Department has been responsible for. They came in exactly on budget. Okay? The only increase here was from the bids that came in from the various vendors. So just, just to, yeah, just to make sure that we're aware, Director Powers and his staff are doing a very good job in holding the line in these inflationary times. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good point. Thank you, Councilman. No more questions? Please cast your ballots. Item B passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Powers. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash two forty-six is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution approving an annexation agreement, including a subdivision plat for the property located at 1602 East Boy Scout Road, sometimes also known and referred to as 918 East Boy Scout Road, Chillicothe, Illinois. And on your desk, there is a handout with a revised communication and annexation agreement.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Assistant Community Development Director Leah Allison to come forward to just explain this annexation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. This is an annexation agreement only for acreage of land that is not contiguous to the city limits currently. It is a request that has come because of a request to divide the land, and when we're within the mile and a half of the city, we have the extraterritorial jurisdiction to review that request, and because the division does not include connection to public sanitary sewer, the annexation agreement comes in, where we ask that this agreement cover the land, the division, and set up a future annexation in connection to public sewer if contiguity is ever established. So at the moment, there is no contiguity, agreement only. The yellow sheet just adds a revised agreement to clarify that the subdivision regulations are under the jurisdiction of the city only, not the county of Peoria, which the county is, is in agreement with. It just falls to the city. So that's why we have that slight change to the agreement that you have before you as a yellow. No other changes to the, the terms of the agreement occur with that revision. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Questions for Ms. Allison? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Allison. Move to concur with recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Allison. Got another one. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash two forty-seven is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution approving the First Amendment to annexation agreement for the property located at 2700 West Altor for Drive, Peoria, Illinois, and this item requires two-thirds vote of corporate authorities, eight votes.
Okay. Ms. Allison, I think you're on again.
Yes. Thank you. This is an agreement for a parcel that has been annexed. It was annexed last December, so there, there isn't an issue of annexation. That has occurred, but what this amendment clarifies is access to that parcel. So there currently exists a sixty-foot wide easement that has been in place for many years, providing access from Allen Road to the subject parcel. This agreement just makes that easement affirmed and clarified that the intent is to serve access, and there, hopefully avoids any uncertainty for future development of that property and access from the property, access to the property from Allen Road. So it's, it's really intended just to clarify through the annexation agreement access issues. Any questions that I can answer?
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you, Director Allison, for all this very, very important work. Move to concur with the recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Discussion, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant Director Allison, I, I, I went through this, I'm not, I don't have a chair in your department, but I couldn't exactly understand why this clarification was needed. I don't mind, I'll be voting for it, but it seemed like it was clear before. Can you, I, I, could you explain that a little bit, please?
Yes. So currently, in the Unified Development Code, when access is to a parcel through other parcels, crossing over, the Unified Development Code says all the parcels in question have to be zoned the same. So if a property such as 2700 West Altifor, which is zoned I-1, zoning industrial one, the access for that property also has to be zoned I-1, which in the current situation is not the case. The two parcels that front Allen Road, serving as access via this easement, are actually zoned C-2, large-scale commercial. So that's where we have this conflict with the Unified Development Code. Doesn't exactly match what the access easement is in place, and so the annexation agreement is attempting to rectify that and clarify through the terms of the annexation agreement. So the zoning doesn't change, none of the parcels change zoning, we're just clarifying that access, despite the difference of zoning, is still allowed.
And that, I presume, was not very clear with the original agreement?
I think it was just something that we didn't catch to begin with in the original agreement.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. No more questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. We don't have anything, so we would be on to new business.
Any new business? Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Director Doolin, could you approach the lectern here? I know that there may be some questions. I think probably you're best qualified to answer any questions, and I spoke to most all of you today about this matter. I think I missed one councilperson, but in discussion across various departments within our city government, that would include police, legal, and community development zoning staff, we are witnessing in our community right now a very significant uptick in applications for tobacco licenses, specifically for standalone tobacco vape retailers. Our current tobacco license code does not differentiate between a gas station that sells tobacco products or a standalone vape store. Our zoning code treats tobacco sales as retail, so it doesn't have any safeguards in place for our neighborhoods or residential areas. The only distance requirement in our city code for a tobacco license is that it can't be located within three hundred and fifty feet from a school. With all of this in mind, I would like staff to look at some recommendations and modifications to our code that would prevent the oversaturation of these businesses in our city going forward. After talking to our Community Development Director, I understand this will take staff a little bit of time to bring back the council. While staff is working on the changes and recommendations, I would like staff to bring back an ordinance next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting, placing a temporary moratorium on the issuance of tobacco licenses, while staff works on bringing the code changes forward. Director Doolin, could you give us maybe a shirt-sleeve summary of that and be ready for questions, so the council understands completely what's, what we're asking for?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. One of the things that we've looked at and seen in Peoria, I think, is a visual uptick in the number of vape stores or standalone stores that occur in our city. I think most recently, people noticed if you drive down University, you see two or three that have popped up in the last six to nine months. And while we look at the overall numbers for tobacco license in the city, we're not seeing a drastic increase in the tobacco license being issued, more so in these... seeing a drastic increase in the tobacco license being issued, more so in these standalone stores that are coming forward. So I think that's what adds a higher layer of complexity to putting, kind of limiting the license. Unlike the liquor license, the tobacco license is just a standalone license for every establishment. So if that's Walgreens, grocery stores, vape stores, gas stations, it's all just one class. And the way that the zoning code approaches it, unlike other uses, is that it's just a retail location, so you don't have the special use process. You don't have other distance requirements that you might have in place. So I don't believe it's as easy as just bringing a quick ordinance back to council in two weeks that kind of go over that. I think staff needs to work with our legal department and our police department to see what's our best path forward to be able to ensure that our neighborhoods are protected and our commercial districts are protected from four, five, six of these stores going in one stretch, but also still, you know, hopefully making sure that we have a friendly business environment in our community. So I think that's why it'll take a little longer. You know, I think we could probably have something in August back to you with some recommendations in our first reading to look at of how we best think we'd approach it. And then that would give you guys all time to also reach out to staff with suggestions or questions you have.
Thank you very much, Director Doolin. I think you have direction to do this. And I want to make certain everyone understands this. It's not an attempt to abrogate or take back anybody's license who's currently operating. It's, this is, they're burgeoning, and I think we need to get a handle on this from a regulatory standpoint. Thank you, Director Doolin. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick caution, not, different matter now. Thank you, Director Doolin, sorry. Mr. Manager, what would be the procedure to remove item twenty-three dash two forty-four, which is the budget, from the consent agenda and have it be in your own item, maybe just in the regular meeting? I think the next eighteen months or so, we'll have some very important meetings, and we'll, I hope and I pray that all my colleagues will know the budget very well. Obviously, I like numbers, so it's easy for me to read that. But I think we got to have some very important meeting, and I'd love to, an opportunity to ask Director Craddy some questions. I know we can pull it out, but I believe it'd be great to have this separate, outside the consent agenda. And I don't know if my colleague would agree with that, but just give us an opportunity to move on with the consent agenda and then really talk to Director Craddy about any type of question we would have about the finances, especially the next ten or twelve months.
Be happy to put it on the regular agenda going forward.
Thank you very much. I hope it's okay, Madam Mayor.
It's absolutely okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I think, a couple of weeks ago, I had expressed some concern about the situation with regards to liquor licenses. I first would like to commend the police chief on stepped-up efforts with regards to the situation downtown, but in light of this recent homicide, Chief, if you wouldn't mind, could you just give us an update, sir, on what's been going on over the last couple of weeks in your efforts? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. Update on last night's homicide. We did make an arrest at about one o'clock today. We arrested twenty-three-year-old Tremere Pate on that, and he's been charged with, one second here, will I pull it up? First-degree murder and attempted robbery on that. We're still working the previous juvenile homicide. So anybody who hears this outside of this council chamber, where any information that can be shared, tip 411 is available, Crime Stoppers, you could always call the Police Department. We're still following up on some leads on that one. June sixteenth, we did a press conference in front of the federal building there in Main and Monroe. We've assigned since then ten officers along with a sergeant to be assigned Tuesday through Saturday, eight-thirty PM to four-thirty AM throughout those days, specifically Friday and Saturday nights, they're specifically assigned to the downtown. Other days of the week, we assign them to do some other things that we need done in our hotspot areas. But Friday and Saturday night, specifically assigned to the downtown, we've added five extra light towers down there, so if you've been down there, you see it's well lit up. The federal building has worked with us to add some large visual no trespassing signs as well. This past week, as of June second, we made four arrests in the area. We seized two guns, thirty-one cars were stopped, thirty-five tickets were issued. Lot of great feedback from the community. Officers are out there. I was off this last week on vacation with my son, but the previous week, I was out there that weekend. The business owners were very happy, the pedestrians and our visitors that were down there. Same thing, is the same feedback I got from our officers is that, again, the people that were coming down to visit our downtown were very pleased to be able to walk down the sidewalks. The business owners were very happy that the police, the presence and the control of the area. That's basically it. We'll continue to do that. We're going to move some of the lights around, and we'll continue to be out there as a presence, and we'll be out here for the remainder of the summer.
Thank you very much, Chief, for the update, and I would just like to thank the Corporation Council for his efforts too, as we continue to kind of monitor the situation. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is about the Technology Industry Grant that we've been working on, and I'm happy to say that it will be released to public on Thursday, the twenty-ninth. Just to go, just to give a background on it, we started a discussion to make it a biotech grant. We wanted to leverage the booming healthcare in the city of Peoria. But after a series of meetings with the Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson, and then our City Manager Patrick Urick and Chris Serry, we tweaked this grant to become, to make it more inclusive so that now it is no more a biotech grant, but it's a tech industry grant. So however, this grant, you know, it aims to support innovation that includes agricultural technology, biomedical technology, medical technology, and other forms of technological advancement. The primary objective of this program is to foster the growth and development of these industries. We wanted to provide financial assistance in the range of ten thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars per company. With this grant, I would say the eligible businesses can secure operational space, they can invest in cutting-edge technologies and leverage both public and private investments in our city. They can use these funds to lease or mortgage assistance, to use it for operational support and other business causes. And I wanted to thank you, Madam Mayor, and all the council members who supported this initiative. I believe that together we can forge a thriving ecosystem that fosters innovation, that shapes the future of biotech and related tech space in Peoria. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership on this initiative, Councilman. Any other new business? Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Mayor. Corporation Council Hayes, this is not a multiple-choice question. This is an essay response question. Where are we with the CO2 pipeline? There's much consternation and concern in our city. Could you give us an update?
I appreciate the opportunity to do so, and just, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention what you said was, you know, to do an essay response. And what I heard for the first time in my life is, go ahead and go on and on, so here we go. That said, I'll keep it crisp. So we have reported to council directly with regard to the hearing in Iowa that the pipeline and hazardous materials safety administration held, as well as on the filing by Wolf Carbon Solutions with the Illinois Commerce Commission. And we made a recommendation, and I think it's nearly a point of insistence, that we intervene at the ICC on the Wolf Carbon Solutions matter. I want to explain why I'm so strident on that matter. About a year and a half ago, the ICC prevailed on an appellate case on a oil pipeline that comes through Illinois. And then the pipeline operators asked for to expand a number of those permitted areas for the pipeline to include pumping stations, which is a far different use, particularly from a local government perspective. And in an appellate decision that just came down a few weeks ago, the appellate court held virtually that those opponents to that expanded use had virtually no opportunity to oppose it, and the ICC was correct to grant the permit on summary proceedings because that expansion was a natural evolution of the original authorization. As many of you know from reading Deputy Corporation Council's reports, the Wolf Carbon Solution application does not include the spur to the Bioerja plant in Peoria presently, but they've indicated that they didn't include that because they don't presently have an agreement with Bioerja, which is a possibility. Given all the money at play, entities that produce carbon dioxide fear, and I think legitimately so, that in the future, they're going to have to pipeline their material someplace in order to stay in business, but there's so much incentive money involved, they're foolish not to look at that as an opportunity. I think we have to look at that as a near inevitability, and in order to maximize our ability to defend the sensibilities and the public health and safety of the citizens of the city of Peoria from what might occur with pipeline permitting within the city of Peoria if that application expands, we have no other choice but to intervene at the ICC at this point to keep our foot in the door. We'll also be able to achieve some practical outcomes that are very important. You know, our fire response department is the finest, clearly, in central Illinois, and many departments from far and wide in our region are going to rely on us if there's a catastrophic event. We're not going to be in a position to tell our well-trained department not to go assist neighbor in need. And if that happens to be this failure of this pipeline, we need to be at the table from the outset of this with the ICC, making certain that industry is responsible with regard of its obligations, with regard to public safety response, if this pipeline does proceed. And so to put ourselves in the best position to defend the health and safety of our citizens and to make sure that our personnel are able to lend their expertise in a way that doesn't necessarily jeopardize them, we need to be at the table from the beginning of the Wolf Carbon Solution matter and seek to intervene. That would be a permissive grant at this point in time, but this was basically my discussion with our Deputy Corporation Council as we prepared to cover those things, which she took the lead on, and I'm very grateful to her for. She's done an excellent job and will continue to do so, but I really don't believe we have any other choice but to do so. Ultimately, our position, I don't know what that'll be, we'll have to figure out what's going on, but at this point in time, I think that that's our most effective next step, and that's our recommendation. And without any objection, we'll proceed without further action of the council on that activity. Thank you.
And Corporation Council and Manager, will you keep the council on your speed dial should there be any development between now and our next regularly scheduled council meeting and any action that we might want to take that would be time-sensitive? But I guess I'm understanding that we are going to intervene if it looks like it's going to come this way, and we, that gives me a little bit of reassurance. So I thought we needed to get that out there tonight for not only entire council, but for those listening and all of our constituents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for that good essay. All right. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a point of clarification I'd like to make with the Corporation Council. Based on the city's position, does that preclude us in any way, shape, or form from talking about it, whether it, options, whether there are a moratorium, or what?
Part of my discussion, thank you, ma'am. Part of my discussion earlier today was with Councilman Grab about, right now, the physical structure of whatever's going to happen, there's no ask to do anything physically within the boundaries of the city of Peoria. If there was, then we would, I think, be within our rights to consider a moratorium. But we're not a permitting authority for any activity because this is not occurring within our municipal boundaries, even though it's within our region. And so a moratorium may be part of a recommendation in the future from our department. Right now, I think that would be largely symbolic, which is an important thing, but I think we satisfy that idea of symbolism by intervening at the ICC. And so rather than extend a moratorium that really is largely symbolic now, I think reserving that until such time as there's real teeth to that would be an option for the council to consider. Certainly, if directed by this council to prepare and execute a moratorium, we'd be happy to do so, but I think that our intervention at the ICC gives everybody the indication we're taking up our responsibilities with regard to governance on this issue and doing our best to represent the citizens of the city of Peoria in that matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And Council Hayes, what does that intervention with ICC look like?
So ICC filings are rather undramatic. They mostly look like letters. They're pretty lengthy sometimes. We're going to have to develop an article, an argument about intervening in a matter when we're not intervening as a right. I think we have a compelling story to tell. I'll mention just as a sidelight that there's a new chairman at the Illinois Commerce Commission, former mayor of Rockford, Doug Scott, is now, had been appointed to the chair of the ICC. And so at least there'll be one member of that board that gives an ear towards municipalities because he used to sit in the chair very much like yours in a community that's a lot like ours.
Okay. So it starts with the letter?
Essentially, it's a formal letter asking permission to intervene in the matter.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and town board.
We have three citizens, Ginger Adams. Ms. Adams?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This letter is being read by someone else because I have to work this evening and am not able to attend the meeting. However, I am a Peoria resident and both an employee of Peoria Public Library and a member of AFSMI three, four, six, four. I want to share with you some information about wages and changes at Peoria Public Library in the last decade, since you've already been aware of our current contract negotiations with Peoria Public Library. Some people may think if we don't like our current pay rate and working conditions, we should find another job. They may also say, we knew about the pay and the hours when we took these jobs. Not only is this a statement that implies it's all right for someone to make low wages that aren't livable, that's what is happening in many cases. For most staff at Peoria Public Library, we fall into two groups: those who did know about the pay and the hours when they took the job, and those who took the job at a time when our pay was above minimum wage and we had different hours of operation. For those who belong to the first group, when they took the job, they saw it as a way to get their foot in the door and later get promoted, or at least to have a job, until they found another job with better pay and/or hours. A great deal of our employees who have been hired in at the library in the last five years have not stuck around because they have found better pay elsewhere. This creates a revolving door effect where we always have people in training and fewer people who master their skills. This also leads to patrons seeing different faces each time they visit and not making that one-on-one connection that patrons used to be able to make with staff. For those who are hoping to get their foot in the door, they are finding this difficult since you can't move up to certain jobs without a bachelor's degree, and for others, without obtaining a masters, masters of library science. and for others, without obtaining a master's, master's of library science degree. With the starting wages for our lowest pay grade, finding the money to pay for these degrees will be difficult. Finding the time will prove even more difficult if they have to work more than one job to pay their bills. I also mentioned that there is a group of us who were hired eleven years ago or longer. For us, we did know the hours and the pay at that time. In 2011, before all of our buildings reopened from their remodels and before our north branch opened in May of that same year, Illinois's minimum wage was $8.90 per hour. Starting pay at Peoria Public Library for our lowest pay grade was $11.50 an hour, or $2.60 above minimum wage. Starting pay for our highest pay grade, librarians who must hold a master's degree in library science, was $19.20 per hour, or $10.30 above minimum wage. Also, in 2011, all of the Peoria Public Library buildings operated with summer hours. From Memorial Day to Labor Day, all Peoria Public Library locations were closed on Sundays. Only one building was open on Saturdays during this timeframe, and that location opened an hour later and closed an hour earlier. Staff were able to work from 10 to 5 and still be paid their normal 9 to 6 rate of pay. This one building that was open on Saturdays during the summer was staffed by employees from all locations and not just the staff permanently assigned to that location to allow all Peoria Public Library employees to have some summer weekends free to enjoy. We are now in 2023. Minimum wage is $13 an hour. Our starting pay for our lowest pay grade is $13 per hour. Entry-level pay for our highest pay grade is $2109 per hour, or $8.09 above minimum wage. Summer hours disappeared when our buildings reopened and the north branch opened its doors. We're working more and not for much more money. I hope you can see that not only has this rate of pay at the library not kept up with inflation, but staff are expected to give up more of their time on weekends than before, all while doing it at a low rate of pay. I've created a chart with a breakdown at the rate of pay at Peoria Public Library in the last thirteen years. If you allow it, it can be redistributed to each member of the city council. It paints a clear picture that funds are very flat and something has to give. Thank you for your time. Katie Baumel, Reference Assistant at the Lakeview Branch of the Peoria Public Library.
Thank you. Now we have Nick Furman. Nick, can you pronounce your last name for me, please?
Sure, yeah. My name is Nick Furman.
Thank you.
And I am here to follow up on the email that I sent you all last night about the carbon dioxide pipeline. I'll just, you know, kind of recap for folks who might be listening and are not up to date on the issue that this proposal is for risky and dangerous infrastructure that would allow polluting industries to continue polluting as normal with the promise that they can bury their pollution somewhere else. And that currently, the federal regulations are under review due to a recent explosion of a similar pipeline in Sotarsa, Mississippi. As was noted, the company Wolf Carbon Solutions has already filed the application with ICC. And they're still reserving the right to build a spurs through the south end of Peoria. And I think it's promising to hear that the city, you know, does want to enter into the process as an intervenor. I think I would love to learn more about, you know, the position that you all want to take and what your interests and what your, you know, strategy is with that. However, I think, excuse me, that, that air pollution today is just killer, so I'm a little... Excuse me, yes. However, I think that, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that to pass the draft moratorium that was given to you all in May by my friend and colleague, Doris Coaster. I don't think that that moratorium would simply be symbolic. And I don't necessarily agree that it makes sense to wait until some construction has started or there's some more movement on that. And I just want to note that the Peoria Park District has already gone forward and taken a leadership role in protecting our land and our residents' safety and passed a moratorium on pipeline construction on their property. And I would urge the city council to follow their lead. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Warth Mohammed?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here to second everything Nick said about the CO2 pipeline on the south side of Peoria. First off, I am a resident of the south side of Peoria, and I don't want a CO2 pipeline built under where I live. And from everybody I spoke to that have knowledge about this pipeline, they're saying that it's a bomb. That's, if you see the video of the pipeline that blew up in Mississippi, it blew up just like a bomb. And the county line and the city line between Peoria's, like, some parts, like a street that separates the city and county line. I don't think a CO2 pipeline leak will respect this county line or the city line. I don't think an invisible line will stop this gas from coming to the city side if there was a leak. Plus, we love our county folk, too. We love our county people, too. We don't want this to endanger their lives. And there is no need for this in the city of Peoria. They already have trucks that, they will be protesting against this, too, because for so long, trucks has been responsible for trucking this CO2 out of the cities, and this will damage their industry as well. So, and the biggest thing that I'm worried about is the rumors that I'm hearing that if a bomb is attempted to be put under the south side of Peoria that these workers could be potentially met with gang violence and gun violence. And that's the last thing I think anybody want to do is put anyone's lives in harm's way. So if there's any possibility that y'all can go ahead and move for a moratorium on this issue so they know this is something that we are not gonna allow in the Peoria city or Peoria county. I ran a club in East Peoria, and it was a teen club. We had graduation for Richwoods, Manuel, and Central, over 500 students in one building. My number-one concern was I didn't want nobody getting shot. I didn't want nobody getting killed. All I could think about is I don't want nobody's child death on my conscience, and I have to live with that. I didn't care if we made money, if we made a profit. My number-one goal was the safety of the kids that came to my club. We didn't have one fight. We didn't have one shooting at my club in a whole year because I took that approach that life meant more than money or any income that could come in from this club or this establishment. So I yield my time. Thank you all for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
We are at an executive session. I believe we do not have anything, so we would be at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.